Thank you, everybody. Come on and welcome you to the City of Nelson work session, February twenty second, two thousand and twenty-four. We could take them all and have a long prayer. Father God, we thank you for today, Lord. We ask that you would be with us, Lord, to lead, guide, protect us, Lord. See each one of these council members, myself, home safe, or folks that are here this evening. And we're our citizens for protection for our police officers, our EMTs, our fire and service, Father God. Those folks that are working to keep us safe, Lord, just be with them. I ask that you would just watch over and protect them. Lord, help us make the best decisions that we can with the city. And we ask it in your name, Jesus, amen. Who are we, your urgent or urgent witnesses?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have you a motion to approve our agenda for proceeding? Chris, please. Ethan, home favorite? Yes, thank you. All right, well, this is capital improvement program. We've got some updates. Miranda, I'm gonna fill in. You and our faculty, let's go ahead and start with what you have. And then I'll add updates, the updates that I've had been busy over the last month. Just working with the respective people, counties and different folks on getting us updates and trying to really push along our projects.
All right. So I have, you have a packet in there. We can kind of review it. The first, so actually the second page is the overview of our funding sources for capital improvement plan. SLOSS, Pickens, SLOSS, Cherokee, and then the general fund capital outlay. This has been reduced because we have completed the projects for SLOSS twenty-two, or SLOSS two, SLOSS four, and SLOSS three within the past three years.
Congratulations, Council.
That is a big deal.
Yes, it is.
And I'll kind of give you an idea of where we're at as far as progress on that table, just a few. So moving forward, the next page is categories. Categories is what was voter approved when we signed the intergovernmental agreement with both counties. Categories covered our transportation, roads and streets, parks and recreation, governmental, government facilities, stormwater, and emergency communications. Emergency communications part is just a clause that it's an intergovernmental agreement with Cherokee County that all cities and all participants in that intergovernmental agreement are contributing. So it's a flat rate every year. Next page is a little bit of our accomplishments over the past couple of years. Phase one of Stormwater Project, Kennesaw Avenue. We implemented the citywide sanitation, which was the sanitation truck, all the cans. Installed flock cameras, purchased a new excavator, the mowers, and the trailer. Trail resurfacing, purchased two different properties, which were the problems we had with the stormwater and flooding. Paving, we had completed several, and I wish I would have counted how many streets that we've actually paved within the past, what, two years?
Yeah.
It's significant, significant. The kiddie park remodel, that was a big deal. And of course, the sanitation truck, I listed it. Yeah, I know, right. Okay, so going into two thousand and twenty-five, this is the years and the years' projection. So right now, the balance of our SLOSS four is sitting at right at one hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred. So those will be allocated to our first, to our park project right down here off of Kennesaw. SLOSS five, Cherokee, one million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-three. That's the balance. That's currently where we're sitting at right now. As you can see annually, it is, these are all projections because obviously it can be ten, according, ten percent above or below. So it's, we're accruing two hundred and eighty-seven thousand annually with that. And that's again a projection. SLOSS two thousand and twenty, that's Pickens, one million, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six is where we're at with that. Available, basically, it's not really available for projects, but that's what we have right now going forward, looking into the future. That one is accruing about three hundred and eighty-four thousand annually. So that's pretty significant. So a total of two million, seven hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine. That's our allocations. All right.
Do you guys have any questions?
And I'm basically giving you this rundown so that when we can start talking about projects and future projects and what you want that to look like. Do you have any questions?
I have tons of it. But I'm a rookie, so I don't understand the numbers. And I've done my best to try to. They don't add up.
We can sit down with you for, you know, at a time and just have a conversation and answer. Just make a note of your, do you have a pen? You want to make, write out your questions?
Oh, I make council notes.
Okay, good deal. I was gonna say, because we can get you some time scheduled and we can try to answer.
That would be awesome.
So what is, with the, when we have this SLOSS, each SLOSS has different categories. Those categories are basically a certain percentage of the revenue that is coming in. So this allocation that you see here is the breakdown of that. So parks and rec annually, we have allotted fifteen thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars annually. That is to go towards parks and rec projects. Five-year total, seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty. General government is five hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-three. Overall total is two million, five hundred and ninety-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-five. Transportation annually, a hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-three. Over the five-year total, six hundred and seventy-one thousand, four sixty-five. All right, and then the annual on the communication is, oh, well, I didn't add that. That is a problem. What is it, ten thousand?
I think we paid it last year. So I better go and check it.
Okay.
It's a party agreement, I think. But it's, when we're tracking it and thinking that it might be done, I might be going.
Do we pay annually or do we pay?
It's annually. Okay, so they ran on the side of those, due like ten thousand, seven times.
But it did go in the right, we paid the last one. So that's, okay, so that's about ten thousand dollars that has to be paid annually. So the total for our five-year project total, three million, three hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and eighty. I'm looking at that thinking, that's, can't be right, that's not right. That's annually, that's annually, that's your total annually.
Question?
Well, no, that's correct, because it's one point, yeah, that's right. You got me second guessing it all.
So this is annually?
Yeah.
If we decide we want to prioritize the project, can we get, do, is this how much you can spend annually? Annually?
That, yeah, or you can let it build up.
Or can we get more money from, because we need to improve it all?
So this is a continuous, it's a five-year, and so this is actually a six-year term. But it, as, if you do not spend it, you continue. It comes in continuously monthly. So the proceeds come in monthly, and it continues to roll until you expend it on whatever projects that you.
But if I have twenty-six, five on eighteen thousand, can I spend twice as much?
If you have it in the bank, if the bank balances allow it.
Oh.
So on the next page, I think what you're looking at, how much is in parks and recs right now? Because it'll accrue fifteen thousand, but that's not where we are currently.
No.
So, no, we're gonna get it.
We have three different SLOSS.
We do.
We just first SLOSS.
We just, yeah. So right now, SLOSS four is the only parks that is dedicated parks, and we have a hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Okay, a hundred and fifty-five thousand, and we'll accrue another fifteen thirty this year.
That is for SLOSS four, that's the old one. So with SLOSS five, we have forty-seven thousand that's also for parks. So a total of.
This SLOSS first place.
So we have a total of two hundred and two thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight.
Okay.
Available for parks and rec.
Maybe I've had a question.
And I forgot that I have it all balanced down here anyway. So to date, that puts us having government and government together, just government as that line item, is four hundred and sixteen. I think that's right.
What do we have in?
No, those are not right, but yeah, I haven't updated the bank balances on that. So let me get back to that. Okay, so general government, two hundred and seventy, oh, this is three-year.
Two seventy-six is what I'm showing, but, right. Is that where you are right now?
That's what's in, that's what, is that what I sent you earlier?
Yeah.
That is what is allocated.
Okay, so that's what's currently there. For right now, two thousand and twenty-four, we have two seventy-six, two hundred and seventy-six thousand. Nathan had a question.
Do you have, is the bank balances in here?
No.
No, it's all right, it's not.
Is this like a blend of Cherokee and Pickens, both? Then progress will find a high end. If the form.
I know that, but I don't.
But phase four, phase four is Pickens.
Yeah, absolutely.
We don't have more than that, or towards it.
We do, so that's what we have. We have two hundred and seventy-six thousand allocated right now. But annually, we'll add two seventy-six by fifteen thousand, five thirty. Yeah, and then a five-year total of seven-six thousand.
This is all the way.
Yes, so around.
We don't get any more than that. What would be core is to see.
And the general governments.
Okay. What's in that?
General government is.
And see what, because this one isn't done yet.
That's gonna be some work.
Yes, that one's still unburling and expanding, yeah.
It's actually.
Still functional. Once she gets back to Mike Nelson, I can tell you actually what.
I believe added the city hall in here, and yet we may have. I bet she, maybe she did, she did, and she added it under term.
I know. But what happens when we?
She added that under.
Okay, so SLOSS four, you see that, you get that, that's where the revenue come in, and then that's the expenses, okay.
She added that under for the government facilities, and it was, it's one million right now. I reached out to both counties for funding, and also.
Yes, that runs out. She did that also funding from CDB. Yes, it's already been one approved through Cherokee County that will start July of two thousand and twenty-five. And so it's like, I think half a percentage.
Yeah, I'm like, this is nothing.
Maybe it's half a percentage.
Right, yeah, we're not.
Yeah. I don't even remember how much it was, but it's a little bit more than we're all taking as far as our percentage is. I think our percentage is pretty much.
Yeah, we know.
Five, maybe. And then, right, so going forward, it's going to be.
Gold.
Point.
It was funny, like, we got chairs, we got counseling tables.
That's the overall.
So I'm getting, that's great. But if I could see how much we have accumulated revenue and how, I don't see exactly the balance.
Yeah. I got you, yeah. Because, yeah, this needs to have just the balances on it. Let me see that.
Which we put in, this is putting, I'm saying, this is getting.
Does he say that I can?
Right, right.
SLOSS five.
Hey, we went far on that, just kind of one more.
And SLOSS two, that's the one. That's something I'm closing that time, two thousand and twenty, four million, thirty-six, two fifty-four. And then the cares is one ninety-seven, oh, three. Okay, so now we have an updated sheet. So currently, we have in government, four hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and four for governmental projects. It's gonna be SLOSS five, Cherokee. Transportation, SLOSS five, again, these are certain percentages, the way that the referendum read when the voters approved it. Transportation, four hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and seventeen. Forty thousand, nine hundred and seventeen. Parks in SLOSS five was fifty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine. All right, so.
That's in addition to the two seventy-six?
No, that's part of the two seventy.
Okay, so.
All right, you found out parks?
Yeah, we've got two seventy-six here, so you're saying it's how much?
I don't know, parks was two oh two.
Two oh two.
Two oh two, six, two eight.
You're talking about your spreadsheet, yours is what we've allocated, like what projects are there versus what the actual, what we've got going on here. So yeah, it's, it's two hundred and six, two eighty-two. Okay, so roads, streets, and et cetera for Pickens County. Because we kind of did that one open-ended, so it's basically all things government. One million, thirty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars. And then the cares relief is a hundred and ninety-seven thousand and three dollars, but that's already been allocated towards the second-phase drainage project. So we're not really counting that because that's already been in the catalog.
Can you get that, can you see the routing?
This one, I'll, yeah, I'll send you that, this is just the balances.
Yeah.
So back to the progress. All right, so three-year total for parks and rec, two hundred and three thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. Three-year total for the general government is two hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two. Transportation, two hundred and eighteen thousand and fifty. Roads and streets, which is also the drainage project that was just completed, and paving. That is nine hundred and twenty-four thousand and six hundred and two dollars. Infrastructure, this includes the stormwater project that's currently in progress, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine. And, no, that don't include it, does it? That's the cares, the first half. Prem and pay, six hundred and, six thousand, five hundred and forty-eight. And then the other cares, thirty thousand, where we did the five-on-one C three program donations, and then the communication of ten thousand, six hundred and eighty-one thousand. Okay, so.
So help me understand real quick, this three-year total is where we will be in three years?
No, that's what we've expended over the past three years.
Oh, the past, so this is the past, okay.
This is past, this is progress.
Okay.
And then the next one's just the chart that shows the historical portion of SLOSS four. You state that we started building that revenue in two thousand and thirteen, and it took us till the twenty, two thousand and twenty-four. We still have some balance remaining, but that shows you how much we expended in those years.
This is, and I think this is a minute that we need to just think about. This is all the stuff we've done in three years. This is a lot of work, this council is doing. And really proud of it. I mean, parks and recs, we've completed the kiddie park, we've spent two hundred and three thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars of our taxpayers' money for better quality of life for our kids. So I love that. And then transportation, two hundred and eighteen fifty, that was, you said some paving, and what was that, roads and streets?
Which one?
The two thousand and eighteen fifty.
That's transportation. That was what's staying in transportation, and that's basically Pickens.
Okay, and then we spent for roads and streets in our drainage project, we spent almost a million dollars improving the quality of life for our people. That's nine thousand, two, nine thousand, nine hundred, twenty-four thousand, six hundred and two. And then our infrastructure, we've spent another half, quarter million dollars, pretty much. So that's, that's a lot. You guys have come together and done a, done a lot, so I'm really proud of that.
Just in fiscal year, I think that's fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, it was five hundred and ninety-five thousand.
Wow.
Yeah, so. But as you see on that, you'll see where the progress started and really took.
I mean, you don't, you don't think about it, but just paving a road, and paving another road, paving another road, cleaning out the storm drain, updating our parks, it adds up.
Is it possible that we can send out a message, I mean, that we can inform everyone what we have spent?
We can add it to our, we can add it to our page. I'll get with Mary Levy and have that added, just saying, you know, here's SLOSS dollars that worked over the last three years. Here's what we've done. And Miranda, if you will, before you leave, if you'll help me just put some bullets out to the side here with what these projects complete, you know, the dollars.
We can hit this PowerPoint once I complete it, because it's not completed. It's a work in progress, we can actually put that over there.
Can you send it to Mary Levy who's done? Perfect, that's a good, that's a good.
Yeah, I've just got the, the mark of communication. And then on SLOSS five, you see where we started receiving the funding in two thousand and nineteen. And like John said, this is the one that's gonna end coming next, is it this year? It's this year, so this one's ending in June of two thousand and twenty-four, and then it's gonna start again with the new SLOSS, the new referendum in June of two thousand and twenty-four.
So it ends in two thousand and twenty-four, June?
It does, it ends in June.
Okay.
Yeah.
So point four five to five, or point five
Yeah.
is where we're going for the new SLOSS, it's already been funded on.
And I would also ask, I think I will, whether that, that answer, it's not so clear.
SLOSS two thousand and twenty, that's the Pickens one, started receiving funds for it in two thousand and twenty. And as you can see, we've expended a little bit of that, but we're, that's a big chunk.
The orange shows the expenses.
Expenses. And then the last page is just the projects. This is the project, CFP project list, that was listed in the capital improvement plan from last year. Kind of hard to see online. Okay, so that's one of the things that I want to do is, if we can, kind of go over the project list and kind of mark off on our capital improvement plan from last year, and then try to think about what do we want that to look like going forward? What kind of projects are we thinking, just thinking about?
So is it possible from this, is that what you're saying, that we can put together a project list?
Yes.
These are the commitments we have.
Those are the commitments that we have that can be changed via vote that, by the, by the council. But yes, those are already what has been committed and put on, on the list to be.
Because the need would be interesting to see what the citizens think about.
Well, I think we've already done the, we did the study, right, the citizen?
We didn't.
Study, yeah.
So this is their priorities?
It is, and the council voted that we would do phase one would be the, this side of the park first, and the, where the basketball court was at. And we have a review of that. But now that we have extra property, we were trying to squeeze everything in, the pickleball court, the basketball slash pickleball court, and the half basketball court. We have enough room now that we could probably have a full basketball court and the tennis slash pickleball courts. So, and still have our pavilion area for the, for the folks. Like I said, Michael Kidd's gonna come down and meet me next week. So we're gonna have another work session. I don't know if we'll get it all done, but in March, if we do, we'll have it in March. But Michael's got a little work on his end once, once he gets, you know, here. Because now he's got a bigger space to work with, and he could propose some things based on looking at our storm drain, our buffer area and stuff like that, so, you know, and then, and then come back at it with the council.
So could we, at the same time, like we gave with what we have done, show this is what our projects we have, and this is what is gonna happen?
Yeah, it's not gonna, you know, this one, phase one, we had agreed to start that in two thousand and twenty-four, so that starts this year. It's basically now, we're just trying to look at, revisit what we have. We know what the people want, but we have a bigger space now. So we want to revisit, we want to revisit what we're trying to cram into a tiny slot into how can we allocate the other properties that we have? What does that look like? As far as development goes.
Because what I see here is, for instance, that the Pickens Street Park is scheduled for two thousand and twenty-eight.
Are you talking about the half basketball court?
Yeah, of Pickens. And I, what I recall is that was a big infrastructure gathering that happened.
It was.
So is it possible that we can, I mean, is this written in stone, can we move it forward?
When you move it forward, we just have to remember that we have to have the cash flow depending upon what projects are coming, you know. And a lot of times, just like with this Kennesaw one, these roads and streets, it just made sense to go ahead and pay while Cherokee County was here doing all this work. So that's why we kind of bumped some of those streets up to be paved in the same, you know, so it, it's ever-changing. But this gives us a good idea of what are we want going forward, what to look at, look for, and what we want to accomplish. But again, it can change, we just gotta make sure that our cash flow works well because if you've got this, this amount, or even this ballpark, which is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, well, if, if this costs two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and we only have two hundred and whatever, then we have to push some stuff out until we let those ones go back out, so.
And I was talking to Michael Kidd, and it is possible, John, that when they come in and they do the half basketball court or full basketball court, whatever that may look like, whenever they're doing those courts down there on phase one, if we, council agrees to it, we could add the half basketball court up on Pickens Street where they wouldn't have to come back, so it would save us money there, if that's something that we end up wanting to do. So we would just have to look at that. When I talk to Michael, a multipurpose court, you can, you can do, it can be anywhere from twenty-five thousand dollars up to seventy-five thousand dollars, depending on what material you use and things like that. So if you want to put something there that's nice, but not, you know, a catalog, so to speak, but you want to put something there, it's, really, you'd have to look at what you could put there and what kind of capital you have to throw at that project.
But like you said, I mean, if we're doing this down here, then maybe, it may be cheaper to go ahead and, and roll it on then too.
That's something we can look at.
Yeah.
So do we want to go by these, like, we've got those, we should look at our projects that we currently have going on for transportation and then parks and rec and the government.
Yeah, so that's the sheet that I sent you, is that if we want to just kind of go over that and those projects and just see what, you know, the priority level is, and if there's anything we want to kind of add.
Okay, so looking at our transportation projects right now, and I, I'm gonna let you give the overalls on there, Miranda, and then I'll talk to the projects that are in progress.
Okay.
Where we are, so.
All right, so if you look, look ahead on two thousand and twenty-five, you, do they have this in the box? It's the point one four.
I think it's the sheet that's painting.
Yeah, it's called current CIP, but it's really tiny.
Okay, yeah, it's super tiny. All right, so.
You got it.
Yeah. Um, last year when we did this CIP, we actually had Baker Street and Nelson Oak Drive slated for two thousand twenty-five, but because it worked out, we went ahead and completed those in two thousand twenty-four. So with that being said, we have stormwater phase two, which is Hillside Street and Cherokee Avenue and School Street.
So the update on that is the only thing that we're waiting on right now is Irish, the property with Ms. Irish Jones. I did a run into her, um, earlier this week and she said, tell Jeff, she's not opposed to giving him an easement. She just needs to know that she can do it. So if he would give her a call, and I'll give you another for her.
Sure.
Um, it has to do with the property being in probate. She said, but I don't have a problem with, with you guys having an easement there. So just have him call her and she will tell him the situation and he'll tell her if it's something she can verbally do or if they, we need to go about it a different way.
Okay.
That is the final thing there before going to bid. So we're ready to go to bid with that one. I spoke with Jeff Morton. I had a meeting with him last week. We have our Lori Jones, uh, signed up for our, as our, um, project manager for this project. And, um, and they're, I'll meet with her next week just to tie off on everything. And she'll get her bid ready for us and, and it will go out to bid. Okay. So I, I look for us to have, have our bids out probably by end of April, if everything goes good with Ms. Irish. That's the only thing that's on this. So we pretty much can just, it, it should have it. All right. So Miranda, I'll turn it back.
And that is important that we do get that ball working so we can get our.
Yes.
Care's funds have to be expended by the end of the year.
Yeah.
Um, okay. So then the next is the sidewalks for Pickens Street North. A hundred and fifty-one thousand two hundred is what we got.
I'm sure we're drawing it, but let me, I missed one. So, you know, so sidewalk phase two for Hillside? No, that's. So South Cherokee Avenue, School Street, and that's, you said that's a sidewalk for one fifty-six, eight sixty?
That is, no, the one fifty-six, eight sixty is the stormwater phase two. And then down below that's the storm drainage, School Street.
Okay.
That's, I think that's all kind of part of the.
It's all together, yes.
Same thing.
And we were waiting on, um, the drainage pipes to be cleaned out. They're, they're done now. And, um, just an update, we, I believe you said yesterday, Kelsey, they came out and completed the storm drain cleanup. We do have one issue and I did not get an update this afternoon, but I will first thing in the morning and send out a text to everybody. Um, we had an issue at Waters and North, um, and North.
North Avenue.
North Avenue. So there's an issue there and, um, I know that we had an issue down here on Kennesaw that the maintenance guy was working on and that was next. So I don't know if they've gotten to it yet, but I will find out. Send the texts out tomorrow. So, but our drainage pipes have been cleaned out and, and that's no longer broken up here.
Okay, so that, yeah, so that's all part of that same.
Mm-hmm.
schematic there.
Yeah.
Um, and then sidewalks, well, Ray Mountain Road, storm drainage, that we bumped out to two thousand twenty-nine, a fifty thousand.
So is, is, can somebody tell me, you know, the, the Ray Mountain Road, um, I know it's been on the CIP since two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. Is it still needed? Is it?
Do what?
The storm drain, this, we had a storm drain, um, project for Ray Mountain Road and it's been on the capital improvement plan since.
We don't have a storm drain on Ray Mountain Road.
It was.
We have a ditch.
Okay. So we need the ditch cleaned out? Is that what it is?
Yeah, we're up for that, probably.
And we're up for that. Well, we've got the equipment now to clean it out, so we just need to order it.
I don't know.
No?
They got huge water line right in that ditch.
Oh.
It takes some levels of mow out on that ditch.
Gotcha. What kind of problems is it, is it possessing right now? Are you seeing any issues? Is it abiding up?
This leaves and everything washes out the road.
So we could.
Coming down my house, I don't have, I just have water.
I'm just wondering if it's something that can be cleaned out for right now and then looked at a little bit later, since there's not a, an immediate threat.
Well, it, it's working fine now.
Okay. Do, do me a favor, just put a note on there for, for, um, our maintenance crew to just go, put eyes on it and give us some insight. And then we'll know. So we'll leave it until we, until we finish, um, until our next, can we do, leave this until our next work session?
See, I thought in the county, some come on, do their payback, or they want to clear over there to.
Yeah, we could have a sale on that sign.
Where they quit selling property. And know that property won't be sold, you know, for sale.
It's not a huge, um, amount that would need to be paid. I mean, maybe that's something we can work at and.
No.
Later.
It's got big, big valve in here and that would install.
No. That's just for the drainage.
Kennesaw Avenue is eighty, maybe? Like, but a whole.
Yeah.
Thing, or is it just a project? It came in like half of what it was supposed to, basically.
Right.
So we could, if we could clean the ditch out ourselves, we probably could use that money for paving.
Mm-hmm.
Just, just be.
The maintenance thing, we keep the big trucks up. But they're doing a huge model job on George Harrison's station there.
Yeah.
And they got cranes and everything running in and out.
Yeah. Um, next up is our sidewalks. And I met with, um, Pickens County. They were having an issue with their engineer. Um, and so they engaged MAXIS Engineering. We, we let them know about Barry and I guess their guy pretty much is covered up, just wasn't making the time to make this a priority. So Bill reached out to, um, Barry and they have sent the, the, they've engaged with them and they're waiting on a proposal back from MAXIS Engineering to start. So they're expecting that sometime this, this month. So as soon as they do that, then MAXIS Engineering can come out and do the engineering for all of it and then we can get started. So that's, that's looking like a brighter spot. I think we went over our last meeting with him where, where there was a, did we, we can't do curving, curving gutter out there because the road slants for, for water drainage. So it would have to be like, um, asphalt with the lines and so forth out that way, rather than concrete sidewalk. So, and then he gave the, the reasoning for the asphalt, which would be easier to repair and things of that nature.
What is that project would look like? Is that gonna be handled? The, the whole, we, we, we have the funds and they handle the project or no?
Yeah. Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna, uh, project manage it for us since it's, um, since it's a large project and they have the people to do it and they'll just, they'll work directly with me.
They'll vet it out and then just share the cost of whatever is.
There. Yeah.
And which side of the road they would go with.
Um, they're looking at it now, but it's gonna be the far side. So if you're coming around Alpha Orchard, it's gonna be on the, um, it would be on the side where it's the.
Opposite side of the city.
Yeah. Yeah, it would be, there's a field, I think. So it's on that field side. It's on the outer side, because the road slants like this to pour water off. And then as far as the sidewalk, we have the sidewalk that goes out here. And I think they're talking about putting the sidewalk on this side, which would be the Sidewinder Chester up some. That was the last understanding I had. And go all the way out and around to the V. They won't go across a railroad track. They'll stop it there and then pick it back up at the end. And then the crosswalk will be across that Alpha Orchard Road and then out. So it had something to do with the, um, the railroad and the, the expense of doing the, all the walks and things like that. So the signage and the specificity, I think is what he called it, that you would have to have for, for, um, you know, going across the, um, the tracks. Any questions on that? We're just wait, basically, we're just waiting right now on, on Barry's proposal now for Bill to get that with me. And I, I, I think that'll happen relatively quickly.
So you're talking about all the way out here and all the way with Pickens to, to match up with where it is?
I'm talking, right now, it's the, it's the Pickens side, that the sidewalks is only gonna be the Pickens side. The Cherokee side would have to be with Cherokee.
Yeah, I mean, our sidewalk ends before the first subdivision.
It does. Yeah, and that's what we're talking about. Instead of, instead of carrying it on out on that side where there's a drainage ditch, put it over on, on the, if we're going out.
Exactly.
It's on the Winchester Road side.
Mine's outside, like that. So we can cross over right there.
Mm-hmm. And they carry it all the way out. Doesn't matter.
Anything about improvements is a lot of people.
Great. There's a lot of people that rush along. Yeah, love their homes. And two are talking about speeding on Pickens today. When I was coming over, this car passed me. I mean, like probably sixty, coming right, when I came out of our neighborhood, right there. So I mean, it's getting really bad.
So I had the opportunity to go sit up there yesterday for fifteen minutes and I was surprised at how fast those vehicles were flying through there.
Yeah.
I really think that we're gonna have to get with Cherokee County and say.
I know that you're thinking right there.
Yeah.
I know you've been.
She said Cherokee.
Yeah, I said Cherokee. I, I, my thing is, is hey, um, we've got, we've done speed bumps, we've done all the things that we can do to slow the traffic down and it's not working. So you're gonna have to write some tickets. I mean, that's the, I mean, I know that they didn't wanna come in and do that, but those, those vehicles were flying. And I'm talking, I'm not talking just a, a small car like mine. I'm talking about duly pickup trucks. They get right up and just slam on brakes, right up the thing, go over and then take off again. I swear the front of the truck goes up like this. It's strong. I was just like, oh my gosh. And it wasn't one, it was like every vehicle. I just sat there and shook my head. I just kind of. And then there's a little speed bumps we have.
I'm still trying to get pricing for.
They're not even phased. We, we have been trying to get pricing from, from Heathcock. He's.
He was about to.
Busy. So, um, anyway, back to the, back to our next thing. Um, that was the sidewalk. Um, that was our sidewalk.
The, the old Nelson, the road that it brings speeds on.
Yeah.
And the sidewalks. Is that still?
I don't see them.
It's not, but it's in the book right there. So I don't know if I took it off for a reason.
I think what we were doing, we, we didn't leave it off. We were trying to get one completed because it's gonna be two different counties.
Okay.
I had a question on number two.
Yeah, go ahead.
So we have a sidewalk. Are we revamping the sidewalk that's there? Cause it goes all the way out to the last house.
You're talking about on Cherokee?
Yeah.
It's probably gonna need, that, that, I know that we've got several sidewalks that needed some work and we have been working on those, but yeah.
It's more repaired than it is like a.
Originally, it was put on there years ago to extend it on out to.
The industrial area.
But does that make sense or does it make more sense to focus on this up here in town?
It, it goes to the last house right now. That's why I was confused. I didn't know.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's a good question.
No, we're, we're extending this because it loops back into the city.
Right.
And that just goes away from the city. It's my thinking.
I mean, how, how, how would you, I was like, the city, the money spent should be, I mean, I don't mind leaving it in there in case it's something we wanna do. And maybe we revamp sidewalks at some point that's going out that way?
I mean, if we got some of that need to repair, get them, you know, do some repair work and stuff.
But not extend it past the last house?
I don't see them needing to myself personally.
I don't either, not, not since we're doing that two mile, basically, almost a two mile loop.
Yeah.
Five mile loop, fifty-nine, going to later. And then today we'd be down toward, which is in our area. So we'd have to be in Cherokee to do.
All I was getting at was all the houses on there didn't have sidewalk covers, you know? It goes to the last house.
Hey, maybe we just leave it in there and just take the amount out and just leave it as a placeholder for later on, because it was a thought about project. We'll just leave it there without, without the amount, but it's just, as a chunk.
Yeah. What do you think about that? Just leave it as a placeholder for right now, take the dollars out?
Yeah, as I'm looking at it, I would say we'll have to know where.
It was.
If there's a place you could tie back in and come back in down, this one, yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, there's your own house.
John, can you do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's just do that. That's a hundred and seventy thousand.
Yeah, so that's, I think about five of them, the whole thing we're talking about. Okay. So then the Kennesaw entrance monument sign?
Yes. So I met with him yesterday, um, had a break meeting with him. He is designing the sign. He said the cost is estimated between eight, ten thousand. I think we have fifteen thousand for that one, don't we?
Yeah.
Something like that. Um, anyway, but that would be to design it, to carve it and then to put it on. You know, install it. So, um, I did talk with him about the possibility of the city maintaining that sign in Jerry, so we could add some flowers, we could mow, we could keep it up. Um, and it would be, you know, we would do a contract with him and say, hey, we're gonna keep, we're gonna, because you put a sign up there, we're gonna maintain this and make it look nice. Cause it'd be a nice entrance into the city. Any, any thoughts on that?
It's just me. It's time to move on.
And, and it, and again, they are, that, it, the design and the work works right now. So I see that happening by the end of summer.
School Street sidewalks.
So School Street, is the School Street the one that goes up between the park and the. So we were talking about doing that when, when we do the, the park area. So, yeah, so that's phase one. Okay.
So that actually could be added into this pro, this park up here?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So then Parks and Rec.
Yeah, that one there, Michael Kidd's gonna come back, take a look at our additional properties and, um, take a look at that, um, area there and build up the asphalt on one end, you know, clean it up, get it cut out and do a, do a nice little smaller pavilion there. Not too small, but something nice where people can come and have a picnic, you know, there, wherever, while their kids are playing ball or happy. Let's see.
Ballpark phase two.
Yeah, and then the extra room, we were talking about the, the extra room, it's possible. I know you were saying, hey, can we do two tennis courts in one area and maybe the, a full basketball court somewhere else? So that's, that's something.
Yeah, a bunch of options, yeah.
That's what I, I.
I drew a dog park.
But can take a look at and then, and then come back to the council and literally have a meeting, come to the work session, let's talk it out. I don't, I don't think there's a problem, but as long as we're, we're not changing what the people wanted and we're just adding to it and making it better. That's phase one. Um, the ballpark phase two is just sitting there right now because that's where we are with it. It's, we're not in phase two. The Pickens Street Park. You just moved it to two thousand twenty-four?
Yeah, because it, I'm pretty sure when we talked about it last year, we had it in phase one, phase two and phase three, and that was gonna be. But again, general government funds would cover Parks and Rec two if, if we decided to allocate, you know, do that. Phase, phase, phase. Phase, 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 back to back to back.
Can we get a price on that? I think he did a big, huge rendering. Have you had a chance to order this one yet?
For what time?
Okay. The other thing is, is we've got all of our stuff at the park down here, just bringing this up. Our benches that we put out, I guess, five or six years ago, and our tables, they're crap, like, rotten too. I don't know if anybody's been up there, but they are just like, like the sun, they did not age well with sun. So I think the ones that we have on here at this new park with the, the metal and the, the plastic coating, may be a better option. But I mean, I went to sit down, cause I've taken out of that park and, and I just noticed that every one of our benches down there are just split at some point, rotten too, and cracks in different places on the seating, and then our tables are splitting. So if you get a chance to take a look at that, do, cause I.
I don't know where we got those from. I guess they're probably. Jerry, you can't even get them.
We replaced the table with the tables there.
Yeah, it's been, it's been like seven years ago, six years ago, seven years ago.
I think it was under the Kirby catalog.
I think the metal, the coating metal probably would be the last there.
Yeah, I like the ones, I use this part sometimes too, I like the ones that are down here. So the next, I don't know, maybe we get a price on that and just see what those are for.
Tables are three hundred.
Okay. We need to, and then we need the bench. But that's just, that's just something that we probably need to look at. Next up is facilities.
Can we go backwards?
Yes.
Just a second. Taping on the baseball park parking lot and street, fifty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five.
Where can we see that at?
At the top in twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, that's, that's, there anymore than the rest of the line of the street.
Really?
I think we took that out.
Really?
Yeah, because it's, once we do phase two, he's got a whole thing, and I think the, the parking.
Nice, okay, so I can take that out.
Yeah, because the part, the parking won't be in between those two things, it's gonna be on the outside. And across the street on that, so.
Okay, good. Uh, yeah, so down to facilities, the land sanitation.
Okay, so for land sanitation, I have had some good opportunities to meet with Mount Martin, Marietta, Will Dennis, and also spoken with Jeremy Denton as well. And hopefully by, I must say, I've got April on here, but I will say by May, maybe we'll be able to narrow something down once everybody gets their property annexed in, all the annexations are complete and everything. But I have requested to buy an acre to two acres, the first sanitation area. We had talked about that months ago, it just, the, Will Dennis is a new one though, he, they have acquired additional land and would be more than happy to possibly sell the city some. So I wanna reach back out to him again and just see where that might look, where it might be. And then I'll come back to you guys with that probably in, at our launch meeting, and then we can go from there. So. City Hall, we had a million dollars allocated for that. I met with both Cherokee County and Pickens County on that for funding support. Both are, Cherokee County is in favor of us using Cherokee County's splosh, even though it's Pickens County, but it's because of what it's for, to be able to allocate funds from our, from our Cherokee's splosh to build City Hall. He will put that in writing for us. And since it's for the good of everybody here, every citizen here would be using it, it's not just one or the other. He said he could do that. I also met with the Director of General Services, his name's Scott Gordon. He was a retired architect and he did city design. And I met with him to get an idea on what it, what it would look like, what would we look at spending, you know, for a city hall. His numbers were a little over the top, I'm not gonna lie, but it's because he's used to building city halls for places like Swanee and, you know, six, six step car garages for Cherokee County, new jails and things. And, but he did have some good ideas when I said, yeah, we're not, we don't want this kind of company. We want a residential feel to it, not some brick and mortar building. And he said, he had a really good idea, he said, when they did, when his group won the bid for Swanee, Georgia, and I've been in that, because that's where Dish Wireless is at, and that's who I work for. And I had to go get permits from there. They had me a very unique city hall. It's, it's different, it's got a lot of historic to it. And he said to me, the way that the, the Swanee did it is, is they reached out to, they did like a half a dozen, like a dozen. We wouldn't need that many architects that just does this stuff. And asked and said, hey, we wanna, we wanna, we want it to feel like it's been here a hundred years, we want a historical aspect to it, maybe from porch, multi-level, it's gonna be multi-use for our museum, a, a community center for our people, and so forth. And he said, and then you let those people come up with it, and then you would award the bid to, to do the design to the one that council approves. So, but I liked that because it gives us options, you're gonna see more than just one person's. You're not gonna have to go pay twenty-five thousand dollars to six people. You're gonna say, hey, we're reaching out to you, you can win this bid, we want, we want you to come up with something unique. Yeah, so it's kinda like a design competition. And he said, it would bring in, it would bring in some, some good folks because Nelson's got some history. So I liked that. He also went over the process with us, the design phase is important because that sets your tone for, for your, for your dollars down road construction. So you, you get it set here at the beginning, you know what your design's gonna look like, everything's laid out, then you go into your drawing phase. So I, I like, I like, he actually drew a nice, and I bet I don't have it here with me. He did this lovely, he did this lovely flow chart for me. And he, he is going to do a, he's gonna do one for us just for the city hall. And plug in our, our, it's just a sheet that tells you what you can expect first, and in what phases. That you, like, for example, a survey, a topo, you've got your phase one environmental, your geo-testing to make sure the soil's good for your, you know, everything is good for you to build a city hall outside. And then you have your project development, which is your materials, testing, special instructions, all that good stuff. And then you would go into other things like furniture. And he, on this one here, they had six hundred thousand dollars for furniture and another four hundred thousand for equipment. And I'm like, yeah, we have some chairs, we have, we have our elbow table, and we have, we're gonna, we're not doing a full kitchen. We're gonna do this, you know, the nice area with heated, like, you know, microwaves and things like that. It'll be more Nelson style, so. Anyway, there's still a way to make it look really nice and without it being a commercial building, so. But he was a lot of help in, in helping us get started in what that looks like. So I'll be updating you guys as we go forward with that. And then as far as getting folks to actually submit their historical designs, that's when you guys would come into it. I'll do the part where we solicit the people, he's gonna work with me since he knows the design companies. We'll get, we'll solicit the, the architect committees to, you know, to actually do the design for us. It'll come back to the council. And then you guys can add stuff to, say, hey, I love this, but I would really like this aspect for, you know. And then, then I would suggest that we put it out for the people to see. So they're a part of it, you know, they're gonna have to look at it forever, so, you know. But that's, that's kinda where, where it goes. Anybody have any questions on that? We, I was told it's CDVG in addition to help with funding. Miranda is, she's gonna reach out to the two ladies that, that Jeff Witten gave me their names. And he said there's money in there still right now for storm drain, and we have one going on. And we got one coming up behind it, and there's money also for facilities. So hopefully we'll end up with enough funding that we won't have to, you know, have a lot of debt, so.
Oh, the city hall. The city hall, you did that one. Sanitation truck, obviously bumped that one out, we just bought it, so just put it back on the schedule cause eventually a lot of people raised for the, for by the, block cameras, that's every year. Bus stop safety.
We were gonna put, we need to get with, I know that we talked about that, there's a spot right down here where kids get on and off a bus. And just putting a, it's not gonna cost much, I don't think, but, and our guys may be able to do it, I don't know. But it's just really erecting like a tin area with seating in it. Just a bench seating to keep them out of the rain and stuff. I see a lot of moms pull up there, pull up in here and just, they're, the kids are waiting, but do we think that's still feasible?
No, I do.
Do they stop at, do they stop at the Pickens Street?
Yeah.
They stop at Pickens Street too?
Stop at the.
Entrances.
Entrances to the celebrations. And then the next street over, whatever that, that neighborhood right there, they stop there. Cause I've gotten behind them.
Down the line, I don't know where we're ending that.
I know they stop at the Pickens and Blue Ridge, the corner of Pickens and Blue Ridge. That's what we were talking about. Oh, is it? But I mean, if we did, and we're talking about, what, William, your mind's better than mine, but you're talking about what, six by six posts and some tin? With a bench?
I mean, I just. Get down the mud, like I said, if you wanna do a bench, or if you just wanna do a stand to give it on.
That's a chair.
The black, black, keep the water rolling in. Yeah, but it's, it's a circle like that, it's better than a solid wall, cause you don't have, you start visiting.
So we can identify the spots if you guys wanna, is there somebody that wants to take that on to just take a look and identify the spots? Miranda says she'll check for grants, so.
Is anybody around while school buses are running? Is anybody around while the school buses are running?
This one here all the time, just being here when they do it.
I think they're at the head of our subdivision, one, you got elementary school, middle school, high school, so they're different times. I can get details on the stuff.
Not what they do, cause I know with Cherokee County, Cherokee County, they just come and drop them off at our subdivision.
I think they drop them to entrances in neighborhoods up there.
Yeah, they don't come in the neighborhoods, they only one of them stop at the entrances.
Oh, wow, I think it's more like. In more ways, they go in?
Yeah.
And a pickup truck from the door?
I didn't think they did that anywhere.
Wow, that is shocking. Cause they do, like, there's kids.
I didn't understand, they do that everywhere.
It really depends on, I think the subdivision is usually. Usually they'll do like a cul-de-sac or a corner.
Yeah, like, you know, a corner or a, like a little moving.
It may be because it's so curvy in there and the hills are twisted, I don't know, it could be roadside issues or anything like that, but, yeah. But if they're, we, we may need one down at the, at the post office, may need one here, and then at, at the corner up there at Pickens and. Blue Ridge. I know that we talked about Pickens and Blue Ridge because it's a parking issue, so.
I always have funds I'm gonna put it though, cause that's also a big turn on.
Well, then now Scott, that bought that piece of property on the other side of where Marsha Heaton's mom's house was, I want people to learn this one. Do we have a runoff?
So.
You're talking about.
Pop? Yeah.
I guarantee you, he would.
Yeah, I don't think it would be an issue, it's just further from the stop.
Do you think, rather than them picking up at the, at that, at the, at that stop, they could pick up just before at the, cause there's really nowhere.
They turned, they turned down the truck, they don't.
Depends on how they turn it down, I don't know how they.
They come down Pickens and then down Blue Ridge.
I mean, if they would have to turn and go that way, two go that stuff, probably mine. Well, I think might be something we need to involve, involve them in.
Right, cause they're the ones picking up and dropping off. What about, I mean, what, I, people just sit in their cars, they're icy, I mean, they do get the, at the top of Emily's Road too, right there, they just line up.
We got some of, some.
Are they gonna use it?
Some.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Are they gonna use it, or are they, are they just gonna sit in their car anyway?
That's the thing, if it's not at the perfect spot, not a lot of guys are gonna get in there.
Right, and are they gonna leave their kid there? I guess that depends on the age of the kid.
This is tricky.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's a little bit of a situation, teach a little bus stop.
I know, it's too greasy out there, they walk home too, but I've seen them walking.
Ours get off and just book it, the ones, you know, at Winchester, our subdivision, and there's only two or three.
Not many.
Pearl used to ride the bus, but she doesn't. So and there was only, I think there's only two of them get off now?
One lady sits up front quite often.
Yeah.
I get home around four, I see them.
Yeah, and then it was.
Not in the best spot, but maybe rather. Yeah, I mean, the county may actually have a standard for someone like that, you know, with their stops.
Can you check on that any? Okay. Um, any more questions around that? I think they're needed, it's just.
Everything else on the list is just replacement, you know, cause we purchased, so.
So the drains cleaned out yesterday, that's what I have, and then that's the finish of our storm drain cleaned out with the exception of Door Avenue, which I owe you guys a, a update on tomorrow. And then the estimated project start date is the first week in March for paving for the kid, and that's all I have.
The Dogwood Pass sidewalk, I didn't, I didn't hear everybody mention it earlier. Connecting School Street to Blue Ridge.
Uh, like you're in the loop? Yeah.
I was thinking.
Maybe we use that money for, that we were talking about money that was for the, oh, Pickens.
I definitely think you should reallocate it to the next part of your sidewalk strategy. I don't know what the status is of.
Well, the good thing is, is if we're gonna do the, if we're gonna do the, the concrete, the sidewalk, when we do phase one, if we're doing it, why would we not just go up the bridge and finish that? If we've got, if we can allocate the other funds for it.
Yeah, that's a big good one.
Let's have a good, maybe add that and then maybe go ahead and put that in there, take those funds and allocate to that. And instead of it saying, is it School Street, make it School Street and Dogwood. So, yeah, so complete the L.
With a blue room, she has.
Yeah.
Yeah, School Street, Dogwood, Blue Ridge, and then it leaves back down to Kennesaw, she makes it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Got it, I got it.
We got one half the L completed. And I'll update on the.
What do we say about ready out in the road, are we leaving now in there?
We're gonna leave the dollars allocated for possible paving, but we're gonna have the boys go, the same as, the, maybe the guys go take a look at it and see what's going on. Clean it out, see if that's an issue, see if it can be cleaned out a little bit. Just remind them if there's a, the.
Water.
Water lines.
You're gonna go that.
So don't be taking, digging it out.
And then it's a two inch water line.
The ten inch water? I'm gonna tell the top video. Do you know where it is? Yeah, Matt always calls it.
Anything else look back on improvement right now?
Any other ideas, thinking forward, thinking out, out, that we would like to go ahead and get on the book just for placeholder?
I think we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of heavy hitters, I mean, we got our, our phase, we've got phase one in there, we got phase two in there, we got our city hall in there, we've got sidewalk completion for our city center, we've got a sidewalk addition out the loop back into the city, out past the apple orchard. That's a lot of projects for the next couple of years, so.
Okay, well, you don't just be thinking about twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, four more. And it, well, it's a five-year plan, you guys, we've gotta have continuous something.
Well, I mean, you can add the maintenance, uh, the, the maintenance property on there, you can add maintenance, the maintenance barn on there, you know. I mean, because right now, we'll, even if we acquire a property, we're gonna have to turn around and, um, and we would, we wouldn't build a maintenance farm right away unless we had the funds to allocate permanent building out there, but we could put a, we could put the fence up, we could put a, some type of a.
You get a pad ready.
Yeah, pad ready, and maybe some kind of top, park our equipment under, you know, place to put our sanitation trucks, so. Yeah, we do can't have that there too.
Where are for the facility for sanitation?
And then, so the next wall cycle that's coming up for tree, if we can only, that one would be the one that probably would be, basically, part of that. I mean, I don't, I don't know how much metal buildings are, any idea?
The bins aren't as, not there.
I don't know that many, one, probably, well, I know they need to be tall.
I'm gonna call it the maintenance facility.
Now, what, what are we gonna do with the old one?
I think we, I mean, we need some, we, we have no place to store anything, we're trying to store stuff in our attic right now, we have nowhere to store our tables, we have nowhere to store our, I mean, anything. I'd like, you don't wanna, like, to really sit down with it for, in the meantime, cause it's gonna take time to build a city hall. If we could take it and revamp it just a little bit, we could make that a community center.
One hundred percent, that would be a cool.
I mean, it would take a little love, you know, it'd take a little love, but I mean, I really think it could be something that people wanna make these things, so.
Yeah.
You know?
I mean, a metal building, a community center is better than nothing, you see.
It is, well, when we get, when we get to city hall, though, I think that that'll be, the thing about, you have to think about the community center is, is that you have to man it. If it's inside of our city hall, it's manned, right? So, um, and then if, I, I'm not above coming in, if somebody needs it, leaving, to open it up, and to make sure it's shut down properly, and I'm sure that, you know, if rotated out or whatever, but at least if it's with the city hall, and it's in, that, that's a multi-use building, it's, it's manned one hundred percent, John. So, but just for now, you know, I mean, we don't have, we have nowhere to store, like, I'd like to see some decorations on our, on our posts coming into town for Christmas, and, you know, just, just show some love that way, and there's nowhere to store anything like that, so. But be thinking about it, I mean, I think there's lots of options there, opportunities. All right, let's move on down to, um, talking about tree ordinance under Christie, and, um, John Oliver wanna, I'm gonna give this over to you guys and let you talk about your findings, um, they both took an initiative here to just wanna be involved in looking in, and looking at our tree ordinance. Our tree ordinance is definitely, um, it is huge compared to anywhere around here. There's a lot of things in that tree ordinance, like, I'm, I'm not letting you, I'm not even gonna do it, I'm not letting you start, go ahead. Do you mind if we start with Christie? Christie, you go ahead.
Well, I did, I, I, well, I started with the Georgia Forestry Commission, cause they're the ones that are really, um, they have a lot of resources about, you know, if you didn't have a tree ordinance, how do you make a tree ordinance, where do you even start? So, basically, it was, I mean, the best ways to model something similar that you wanna be like, or that your demographics are like, or that your population is close, or something like that, so I just made a list of, I'm gonna make a list, I printed out a list, of people, of cities, many of which I've never heard of, um, in Georgia that are similar in population, obviously, I don't know the demographics of, I don't even know where they are, so, um, and just sort of went, just started looking, Googling, trying to find what people were doing. The three big things that, beyond just being, um, wanting to save the trees, it's, usually the issues are erosion, um, and sediment control, that's why they don't want you taking down much trees, buffers, um, and nobody wants timbering, for obvious reasons. So, um, most of the cities that are like our size defer to the county. Pickens County doesn't have a tree ordinance, so, um, Cherokee's ordinance kinda looks like ours, but it.
Fifty-five pages.
Fifty-five pages, so, um, so obviously, we're somewhere in the middle. I did find, um, this is Blue Ridge, their population's twelve twenty-six, according to, I mean, you know, somewhere around there. There's this, not really a, an ordinance, it's just part of their zoning, um, it's not really separated out so much, but anyway, it's two pages. This place called Wood Barn, which is a population of one thousand seventy, is also called, it's nicknamed Tree City USA. Everything's tree, they're, it's just tree, that's, theirs is four pages long. East LJ, if you don't know East LJ, they're growing, four pages long. So, I think ours is just a little much, I don't, I, I think it's a little much.
So let's keep the first four pages.
So, yeah.
Pick one out, eight pages, they take one out and use it.
It's gonna be some, some work, I think, to, to pare it down, but, but again, I think using a similar, you know, you kinda, to me, you take little pieces and parcels of all these that you like, and just sort of stick it together, is what I would do. You know, we like this, we don't like that, we don't need, you know, some people have a tree commission, we only tree commission, I don't think.
Well, most of our land is developed.
Yes.
I mean, with the exception of, with the exception of anything that's annexed in from Georgia Marble, that, in there, you know, that could happen, and Rio landed developing, I think, so we're pretty much landlocked, we don't have, unless you're annexing in, as far as the city goes, we, we don't have a lot of, you know, we don't have a lot of need for the ordinance we have. Do I think an ordinance, an ordinance is needed, absolutely, because the ordinance controls our, it controls what we want our city to look like, and I, I think that that is good, but I, I do think that, I'm with you, I think it needs to be pared down, I think we need to have, leave room for development. What do we want development to look like? Right now, our development looks like this, if somebody goes out there and cuts all those trees off, it's a hundred dollar fine, that is it. So, I, I applaud Jeremy for coming in and wanting to do it the right way, he has come in, he's asked for a variance.
A variance was a hundred and fifty dollars.
The variance was more than his property. So, while I, while I do feel that we need to think beyond what we have right now, where we are landlocked, if we annex, and there is that possibility, because there is talk of it, what do we want that to look like for our city? And how do we control that? So, um, I applaud you and you for taking the initiative too, to, to come and look at this and say, hey, I wanna see what it looks like too. And I mean, cause I looked at it and was like this, I did, I did review it, and I, it hurt my head, so, um, maybe, I don't know how your B feels, um, on the council, but maybe John, DeCressey, you guys get together, take a stat at it, and see what you can come up with, based on the ordinance that we have, and then maybe after they make their stat at it, and they come back with us, we all take a look at what we currently have, take a look at that tree ordinance that we currently have and say, hmm, this is a keeper for me, and highlight that. I really, I, this speaks to me, if we, if we annex land in, and we, we want, we wanna know what, what we can do, we want, we wanna, we wanna keep our fabric the way it is, how do we want that to look, and what pieces of what we have currently would work? What we wanna keep, this, this is a definite yes, and then I think we also need to look at something of development. We don't have a city center, I mean, you know, like a downtown, what they call a downtown area, but we do have developable land there, if, if, Georgia Marble annexed, there's six hundred thousand acres this way, there's another, I don't know, a hundred and something this way, so there's a lot of land there that's the, that could be developed at some point, and to say that it's never gonna be developed is, I, I just think that's wishful thinking, because everything is coming this way, but we, we do have the opportunity to look at it now, and, and maybe lay the foundation for, for what we want it to look like, so. And with that, I'll open up the floor for discussion, and go, let's start with William, and go roundtable, and, you know, your thoughts on it, how, you know.
So that'd probably be a good idea, start with what you've got.
I mean, you know, there's.
Comparable.
Yeah, comparable, if we're comparable size, comparable, I mean, obviously.
On the land, you can, even if somebody annexed, say, Mr. Trent, is that his name?
Walt Pickens, Walt Pickens.
No, the gentleman that annexed the corner up there.
Jer, oh, Jeremy Denton.
Jeremy, say he annexed that hill, the, the thought of building a subdivision, instead of what he's doing. Well, just the nature of having to have septic tanks and all of that, you're gonna be looking at larger lots, where you're gonna end up having the reeds left, and you could get into doing, putting an ordinance, you know, that a, a large community like that could be, typically streets and lots are cleared only as used, and only clear what's required for the septic system, anything else would have to be a submitted design for approval, things like that. Big industrial where you did a little bit, at that point, you wanna concentrate more on buffers, the buffer you can get, if it's a matter of leaving an existing buffer, or want to replace with, if they need to clear up close to the road, or closer to a community, you live out, it gets planted back.
And I mean, I like the idea of them bringing in their, their plan, to say, hey, here's what we wanna do, Jeremy Denton verbally did that by saying, hey, we wanna clear out the center and leave a buffer all the way around it, uh, I mean, I'd like to see that in a plan somewhat, I don't care if it's sketched out, show me what it's gonna look.
Has he made any comment on where he's at with this, cause he was working with the state on this disturbance project, wasn't he?
I think it's pretty much done, yeah, cause we're not that late, we wanna get that back.
That's what I was saying, as far as one of you.
Yeah, the last one I talked to, I can't remember if he was about to tell me, it was like they were just waiting to get it back, like it was.
I know the state's behind, they have wonderful rules about how long you have to be planning to do, that they ignore, but that's the state for you. This is definitely, again, whoever adopted that, went to one of the jurisdictions, grabbed theirs, and changed the name.
I think it was Cherokee County, was it, or?
Probably out of Alpharetta, Cherokee probably stole it from Roswell.
Yeah. Well, Cherokee's have revisions since the, the.
But it was local, folks, it didn't. Well, you get into, meet with that account too, if you're gonna be doing things that have large parking lots and stuff like that, you're gonna try to get some shading in, to start heat out of the feds, that type of thing, but you're not gonna be dealing with a lot of that.
Right now, we have no, there's no consequence to somebody just doing, just doing what they wanted, there's, there's. We need to visit that, but we need to realistically, in my opinion, look at, look at development, you know, I mean, I think there's some stuff in there that I read about use of, developed subdivisions.
Conservation.
Yeah, and it, and it, and it doesn't, that's pretty good, I mean, I looked at that, and Laurel Lake is the way it is, I think, because of that.
That's poor, I think they're coming in that Laurel.
Oh, is it? I mean, I like the fact, I like the fact we have trees there, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I mean, it's, it's a nice area, and it's not just flat-lined and trees are, houses are on top of each other, so, I mean, I think that there's definitely room to keep certain things.
Well, a lot of this looks like it's designed for the areas that have sewer, where they're gonna come in and masticate everything, mass off, you know, fifty acres down to dirt, throw everything in, and have to replant everything. We're still at the point where there isn't ample amount of trees, like, my lot, got an acre, and it's, I'd love to get a lot more cut down than what's been taken down, honestly, we've got pine trees out there that scare me to death, but this is definitely too much for me to find a middle ground. You know, I see nothing with granting, being a variance until we get this thing worked out, till they go ahead and deal working.
If we don't grant the variance, I mean, they already told us they want, they just wanna clear the middle out, we knew they were annexing in to put a concrete plant there. And so, I, I'm in favor of a variance, um, according to this tree ordinance, I can grant a variance even without the council. I don't wanna do that, I want everybody to be on the same page, but I, I think understanding.
Basically, all they wanna do is prolong or put off the delivery time of the tree survey, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, they just, yeah, so, and I mean, it's not gonna matter right in the middle where they're clearing out to put their, their concrete plant anyway, they're not gonna put trees right back there, right? So, I don't see a problem with granting this, a variance for that, and then, and then we just need to get our ducks in a row for.
I don't even know what the variance request is.
For the, for the purpose of a variance, it couldn't be just, you're exempted from following this whole mess. The tree ordinance, so it would need to be specified how they are secreted.
I'm hearing variance, I know it's been posted, they're asking for one, but I don't even know what they're asking for.
Yeah, so they would, they would need to get specific on which, which sections they need relief from.
And we have the paper on that, so, and I know they're gonna come and talk to it at the, at the meeting coming up, so.
Sit for next meeting.
Yes.
We have to sit for thirty-one days, I think, before we could even go on the, the agenda, so.
They give them the paper as, and letters and signs.
But, yeah, I think, I think for developmental purposes, for later down the road, if anybody else annexes in, it would be good to just have some, some, you know, stronger verbiage around development, and, and maybe some higher consequences, um, and maybe the integral consequences, if you do this, it's, and it's progressive, you know, so right now, like I said, there's nobody holding people accountable.
I think that was for, and, and we can tell a little bit, we spent the ones.
Yeah, we do, we need to visit our, there's a couple of things that I wanna visit this year during our work sessions, I wanna look at our, um, I wanna look at our fee schedules, I wanna get those to you, um, I wanna do one at a time, but we're gonna look at our fee schedules, um, I wanna also look at our physical policy, it's time to, we should be doing that every year, we haven't done that in, since I've been here but once, so we need to look at that, things are becoming more costly.
Thought we changed the fee schedule last year.
To.
It was twenty twenty, and we adopted Pickens, and then they changed it like a month later.
Yeah, so, but we, so we need to look at it, I mean, we should be looking at that yearly, based on, um, the classes and stuff, I took, but.
I remember we talked about it several months ago, when y'all was gonna bring, well, Pickens.
We were waiting here, we were waiting on Pickens to, have they done that yet?
They changed it, yeah.
They have not, they still have not. Well, maybe we need to look at ours, and then, I know that William was saying, cause it was a math thing, if you remember, where it was this much of this, and it was like.
So what we're at now is the same as Pickens. Need to look at the house bill.
What they were in twenty twenty?
Four ninety-three.
Yeah, something like that.
Well, and that's, they fixed to go, make a huge curve over all the passes, so.
Oh, really?
But not since then?
Yeah, it's at, it's been down there the last two or three years, but it's got a better chance of passing this year, probably. It has to do with business license, or occupational tax, or not business license, everything sticks to be effective.
I mean, for people that are small, the people that, is gonna be. Twenty, the people that, is gonna be this area here, people upgrading, you know, their houses and doing renovations on there.
Yeah, I think it's, uh, no, it's not four nine three.
People at Winchester Oaks could probably afford it.
Prove it by this.
This area. It would be a hardship.
Yeah, I think talking rocks are like that, it's like, it's.
So, um, Chris, do you have anything on the, on the tree stuff?
No, I think that's it, um, I think the only other thing, he, he did say, the forestry guy said, um, cause I was telling him, you know, I was like, ours is, what's your population, and I, you know, I said the thing, he says, big, and he said, well, an issue with that is that when you get it too complicated, when it's too, he said, who's enforcing it, and how do you enforce it? And he said, I sometimes, sometimes simple is better, especially for a small, he said, no, you're not Merrietta, or, which I find out Merriett is, cause they have, you have to make an application for your land disturbance, and then you have all the pages behind that look very similar to ours, with the diameters and the, doing your math and all that stuff. So, they need this, I mean, cause they got, you know, they're getting cleared up, so.
Places like that, I thought you're trying to figure out how to basically rebuild nature, once they get through the project.
Right, cause they come in and, and then they plant stuff, so, we don't have that, but, I mean, like you're saying, we need to plan for if somebody is gonna do a subdivision, we obviously don't want them to come in and, and then, you know, ours is, you know, Winchester's, I've got trees all on the front of mine, which is actually unusual in there, in front of mine.
I think, like I said, enough of the driveway, enough of the house, enough of the septic field. I mean, that's, we can start off with, septic and all, you limit them to that, and they have to ask for anything over the hook, not a possibility to look at. Could change that once you come in, if you ever do get sewer, then you may have to revisit it.
All right, so we'll look for you guys to collaborate and then come back to us with, with some thoughts, and then maybe during the next work session, and we can, everybody can take a, have time to take a look at it and see what you really think we can't live without in there for future growth. All right, next up is, um, we do business and we got funding, so, can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for policy?
Make a motion to adjourn to executive.
And James, all favor? You may. Can I get a motion to adjourn from executive session?
I don't.
So, James, and choose the second, for you, so it's vice versa this time, okay, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Follow your days.
This is yours, Chrissy.
Huh?
This is yours.
Your, sorry.
This is yours.
Second.
Oh, second.
All favor? You may.
Get us out.